Okay, we're gonna call Murfreesboro City Council's special meeting regarding the budget, May 23, 2019, at 5:00. We're gonna call it to order. Mr. Tindall, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. You were presented with the budget on the 15th, so I want to thank Aaron, and Amanda, and Melissa, and all those that put in a lot of hours to get that finalized and out to you. So today, what we'd like to do is have the executive directors talk to you about their goals for next year, accomplishments last year, and goals for next year, and certainly answer any questions you might have. The department directors are here. If you have specific questions about the department that they might be able to answer, certainly they'll be available. After that, depending on our time, because we do have a meeting tonight, we can certainly have a discussion about any part of the budget that you'd like to talk about. So unless there's any questions of me, we can start with Mr. Gore and Utility Enterprises.
Mayor Council, thank you for the opportunity. What you'll see here before you are really just Utility Enterprises Airport, Solid Waste, Electric Department, Water Resources Department, looking at the FY20 goals. I believe all the accomplishments are in the actual budget document, but we wanted to focus on this, on the next year's goals. So for the airport, we want to look at maintaining safe and efficient operations during the new terminal and hangar construction. We have a new point-of-sale and accounting software to help work accuracy and efficiency, as well as coordinate with the finance department's efficiency. Pursue and manage federal and state grants for a number of airport improvement projects, and obviously partner with other city departments and other agencies and stakeholders, and looking for cost-effective methods to meet the increase in customer demands, increase level of services, and as well as maintain existing facilities. For solid waste, and stop me at any time, or you can, we can talk about something that I go over here at the end of my presentation. We do want to look at acquiring land for a transfer station. We believe that would create immediate efficiencies in our ability to keep trucks, side loaders, and rear loaders on the roads, picking up garbage. We do want to improve the effectiveness of yard waste pickup. We've already started doing that recently by some innovative, using dump trucks in lieu of the knucklebooms leaving the neighborhoods and going and having to dump their waste. We're running dump trucks alongside them, and then working overtime on Wednesdays and Saturdays. But we want to continue to look at peak seasons next year, so that we anticipate heavy yard waste weeks when people are pruning. We do want to convert the convenience center, and this may be something we want to talk about, but the goal is to really look at making that a full recycle center and do away with the garbage collection. So partner with Rutherford County to haul the recyclables and open that convenience center five days a week, and then update Chapter 14 of the city code regarding solid waste. Electric, we're working actively. You may have seen out in front of Broad Street here. They're working actively to get fiber optic network to 32. Yes, sir?
Sorry, is the conversion to a recycling, is that part of the budget, like what's in our budget right now?
That's part of, yes, what we would like to do this next budget year.
So is that considered months away, or?
Well, Joey here. It's in the capital improvements plan. You want to talk about it, or?
I, well, I mean, you know, I guess, I guess it's new to me, and maybe I missed it in a different meeting, or whatever, but, you know, we've had an awful lot of discussion about the, about that Main Street Center. You know, I mean, that's what we're talking about, right?
Right, right. Well, we've got it budgeted. It doesn't mean, I mean, we would, we would come back with a proposal to give you all an opportunity to approve those expenditures, to convert that to a recycle center. What we've found is, is that we are reliant on Republic to come and haul the containers that are being filled with garbage. And so when those containers get full, and I think they're not, they're not coming and hauling those as frequently as we need them, so we have to shut down. I've gotten a lot of complaints over the past couple of months that that recycles, or that center is closed, and it's not because of the recyclables being full. It's because of the garbage bins are full, and we're relying on an outside vendor to do that. So we can do one or two, so the idea was, people can take their garbage to the county convenience centers. We make this fully recyclable, and we're, it's just us and the county now. So we can control the county's pickup a little bit better, or a lot better than we can control Republic's pickup of the trash bins.
So would we not, we would not have then a city convenience center?
Well, it would just be recyclables.
Yeah, but there's no place for us to just go take trash if we want to take trash in the middle of our weekly cycle, or whatever.
Right.
And we could be going towards a business that's not going the right direction as far as recycling revenues go. Personally, I just think, really, as it relates to recycling, for my money, I'd bid it out and let somebody else deal with it. I mean, I think we want to order, we want to offer it in our town. I wish it's here, and I hope it's here. I paid to have it done, and I think that's the way it ought to be. I mean, you know, there is no revenue stream in it. It costs us money. Unless we're going to charge people to drop off their recyclables, and we can make it at least net neutral, I'm in for that. But other than that, I would say we privatize it, let somebody else deal with it.
Right.
I don't want, I don't want another loser, I guess is what I'm getting at, and we don't have a place to take trash. I mean, I actually show up at 8:30 at that spot every so often to try to get my trash in there before it closes.
Okay.
But whatever, I mean, I just, that'd be for my opinion on it. I'd like to have it, but.
Like Mr. Gore said, we'll, this is just the budgeting part of it, so we have the money set aside to do something. We'd certainly come back with a plan before we implemented anything, so the council can pass it.
How much do we have set aside in the budget for that part of this plan? I mean, about, is it?
Joey, you know how much?
$270,000.
$270,000.
Is that a yearly kind of a number?
It's in the CIP.
It's in the CIP. There would be no staffing, there would be no operational changes, other than we would change out some of the equipment to do more of the recycling versus the garbage compaction.
Okay. Go ahead.
I wouldn't talk more about it, but I'm, if nobody else wants to talk about it, we don't need to talk more about it.
Well, I'll follow up on what Rick's saying, because I agree with him. I think the privatizing option would be the one that I would favor if we're doing recyclables, because there's no money to be made in it. It's a losing proposition.
Well.
A local ass where we'll have to pay to dump it somewhere. Everybody believes that some, for reasons, we're going to sell it somewhere and benefit by recycling it. If they want it recycled, they should pay for the service.
If we can talk about that, like we do, like they do the TVs, the county, you know, they don't take TVs for free because they gotta pay for it.
Right.
Right? So for me, it'd be the same deal on recycling. I'm glad to have a recycling center if people want to pay whatever it costs us to deal with the recycling. And I guess you guys probably saw the articles, that, you know, 92 out of the 96 loads, or 102 out of the 106 loads of recyclables that got taken to the schools this year, got taken to the dump.
Right.
I mean, I'm not in it for that.
Right.
So whatever it needs to happen on that, if we need to talk about it later, we can talk about it later, but I would just say, I'd rather.
The tough part of that discussion is getting Republic to come and pick up the garbage bins quicker. Otherwise, that's why we've had to limit it to a three-day-a-week deal.
I just think that's a separate problem.
Okay.
And I think that's a separate, I agree that that needs to be addressed, and we addressed it to some degree by closing Tuesdays and Fridays, but I completely agree that needs to be addressed. I just don't want to turn it into a different money loser. I don't want to go from one loser to another loser, is what I'm getting at.
Right, right. I got you. Message received.
Just my opinion on it. I want to have it.
We'll have time, you know, we've got this whole, we've, we're, all the mayors are meeting tomorrow. I think Mayor Ketchum's invited to start discussing the next steps in solid waste, so we're gonna have lots of discussions on recyclables and all of those things moving forward. So let's.
I apologize. I had no idea it was in the budget.
No, listen, that's why we're here. I mean, this is, this is why we're talking.
It's in the, it's in the CIP budget, which we will visit with council later before we make any decisions. So we've allocated it over there, but it's not, there's been no decisions even on a budgetary standpoint.
All right, better. Yep, good.
And it's in the 2021.
I knew that was probably gonna.
Oh, 2020, oh, it's in 2021 budget, so.
Yeah, in the 2021 CIP, so it's not even affecting the proposed at service out of operating.
Okay.
Hey, that's why I brought it up, so we could talk about it. So on the electric, we're going to complete the fiber optic networks to the 32-city facilities. We're looking at developing an LED, a street lighting design guide manual for residential, commercial, and multifamily. Coordinate with city space needs, study and finalize site selection for new MED campus, and then, of course, continue to coordinating with pole relocation or underground electric construction in conjunction with new roadway projects and roadway widenings. For water resources, finalize the Northeast Regional Pump Station and force main design alignment. Complete our 201 wastewater facilities plan, which is really more of a tactical guide to how we want to logically extend our sewer, and looking at areas best served by decentralized step systems. We're looking at designing wet weather treatment upgrades for the overall creek pump station and our water resource recovery facility, and starting a stormwater model that demonstrates how our permanent stormwater control devices treat runoff, and maybe show the state that we're getting some good, good treatment of runoff into the streams before it gets into the stream. So those are kind of the high points for the goals for next year. If you all would like to ask any questions, I'm available.
Does the solid waste come under, solid waste is not under this, right? I have the solid waste. It is, right?
Yes.
Okay, can I ask, excuse me, Mr. Joey? Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Come on up, Joey. Come on up.
Joey.
Joey, come on up.
Come on up to the mic, so you can be recorded. You can get on the record.
Don't worry, you're not in trouble. You're okay. Just a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand we are almost going down the bare minimum on our employees in your department. You cannot seem to hire anybody because of what we are paying. Is that right, 14? Is that why?
Well, I mean, it's been very difficult for anybody to hire a driver here, whether locally, whether it be Rutherford County, myself, so, in fact, broached the subject with Darren about changing two of my driver positions to labor positions.
Right.
And just because I think that we could train them from within, because in 2020, the rules of DOT licensing is going to be changed anyway, because they haven't determined yet from a federal standpoint, they're gonna have to have 10 hours or 20 hours a classroom before they can even get their license. So it's something that we're gonna have to be looking at coming forward in the next five, 10 years for any department that has a CDL-licensed driver. So we're just going to decide that maybe it'd be easier for us to incorporate that from within.
And I'll say this, I think with the flexibility of the new pay plan, if CDL licensure becomes that much more difficult and that much more valuable, then we're gonna have to adjust to accommodate that. If we've got a, if we have a need and the market is not there, and we're competing with others, then that's something, I think, with the pay plan, we gotta, we're gonna have to take a hard look at it.
Right, because I, seems like we're fattening frogs for snakes, because we are, you know, get them trained, they'll get their CDL license, then they'll leave us going somewhere else. So.
That's a possibility.
Mm-hmm. I don't thi, and I think Alan's right, but it's not, that's not just here, though.
That's correct. That's a nationwide problem.
When you talk to.
Oh, yeah. I've been doing a little research. They're doing it everywhere. They'll get their CDL, and then they'll go out and looking for whoever's making, hiring the most. That's where they're going. I didn't know if our stipulations were, how long does it take them to get their CDL license?
Right now, to present, what you basically is just, you take a written test. Once you take that written test, you're back to just like you were 15 years old with a permit, and then you have to go, and then you have to take the driving test. The driving test consists of a pre-trip with a police officer, or a state trooper, and then you drive, and if you pass, you get your CDL license. They'll, they'll give you a temporary one right there, and then they'll mail you one within three weeks.
Yeah, I've just been doing a little research on that, and I just wondered, were we the same? But you're doing a fabulous job. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Gore, let me give you an award. You didn't come here not receiving, expecting to receive an award. But this is actually from the American Water Works Association Kentucky/Tennessee section, an award of merit to the management and employees of what was then the Murfreesboro Water Department, 1957.
57, okay, yeah.
So that was good work, Gary.
Mr. Tindall, I have, Mr. Gore, and I don't know if, I've got one quick question. Where, where does this in context, you know, I think the elephant in the room that we've not, none of us have been part of, but the analysis of consolidation of MED and Middle Tennessee Electric, where, where is that, or, you know, is that something that will be coming to the council? What's your thoughts?
Well, we are in the process still of going through that analysis and working with Middle Tennessee as they go through their analysis of it. So we've gotten pretty good information and some discussions so far, but yes, it will come to council, probably jointly with the Power Board. Probably by the time we go through the process that we need to go through, it'll probably be around the July timeframe before we'll be able to do that.
Okay.
And of course, the context of that is for our capital improvement program. If you recall, we had $737 million in capital improvements over the next five years. So some of that's been funded, $338 million's been funded, one way or the other, which leaves us with about $400 million still that needs to be funded. So part of, part of our analysis is to look at how we would utilize any type of funds that we would receive along the context of CIP.
Okay. All right, thank you. And we'll move to Development Services.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about Development Services. Really, 2019 was a year of change for us, and we're made up of re-operating departments, planning, building codes, and community development. Robert Holtz is here from the Building Codes Department, Don Anthony from Planning, and Patty Pope from Community Development. Their hard work allowed us to complete our budget this year through Administration Department. Services overview, we have 41 employees. We're not fully staffed. We have a project engineer position open. We're mostly external services, things like plans review, permits, community development services. But we also provide citywide services in long-range planning, zoning, and codes enforcement, and also in the areas of fair housing and other community development services. Our revenue is generally derived from fees for service, and also from federal and state grants. Some overall goals for the division, something we've been working on, something we've been bringing to you for a little while now, is a land development management software solution for our land development process. We've got a kickoff meeting scheduled with the vendor next week to start through that in earnest. I expect to have some elements, modules available within about 90 days that we'll actually start, put on the street to help our staff with the land development process. We'll initiate electronic plans review and FY20, and also something that personally I want to do for our staff. Checked with our staff, maybe 10 years or so ago, we started an initiative we called Service Excellence. Quite a few of our staff took that training, but I took a check. We have not provided training at the customer service level, at least in development services, for maybe over half our staff. So I want to get back to a, especially for our frontline staff, customer service training, and also dealing with difficult customers, which can happen to us from time to time. Just give them some more tools in the toolbox. Those are overall initiatives. Looking department by department, the Building Codes Department's 26 employees. They've created, we proposed this year a permit services manager position. We manage really the land development software on their side, and also organize and supervise our permitting operations and permit clerks. We created a building inspector two position, which would allow our senior inspectors an opportunity to advance to that next level, create some upward mobility there. We budgeted a projected decrease, because we are trying to anticipate the building industry, we've projected a decrease of 2% in this year's revenue. We also, for a 20, FY20, we have proposed, and it's budgeted, for a sign consultant to update and enhance our sign ordinance, and also our building departments working with the Public Works Department and administration on the evaluation of city buildings for accessibility, as well as public facilities for accessibility in general. And then an initiative out of the Building Codes Department is to continue cross-training of our permit staff and our inspection staff, so there's backups and redundancy in every position. Looking at the planning department for FY2020, it's 14 full-time employees. That's an increase of three after we reorganized last year. Those were interdepartmental transfers of staff that was generally involved in land management, land development. We still have that, we're not fully staffed there, one position open. We also, in our budget, are 12 part-time appointed positions, serving the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. On that side, again, trying to anticipate the development industry, we have projected a 4% reduction in revenue. We have proposed fees for certain services that we provide for free today. Mr. Anthony will be bringing that back for a future consideration by this body. And then 15 long-range planning projects for FY20 are on our radar screen that our staff will be working on. That'll be all internally driven, internally conducted. And then looking at community development, areas of emphasis at, in FY19, that was two full-time positions and one part-time position. For this year, we've received notice from the federal government. The mayor received a letter a few, a few days back that we would be increased on the community development block grant funding by 8%. Our emergency solutions grants from the state of Tennessee remain unchanged this year, and so we will see an increase in funding for community development. The director's position is open now, following retirement in January by John Callow. What we're proposing to do is transition that, some of those responsibilities to our planning director, giving the planning director some additional community development responsibilities, and then creating an assistant director's position within the department that would be responsible for the day-to-day operation of the department itself. And then we would look to support the community development program with activities with staff from the Building Codes Department and Planning Departments. With retirement this year, we were able to look at the operations and feel like this is a more effective way to manage, and also incorporates our community development program more fully into mainline city departments. And then we're going to implement this year's current action plan, which has been going through the review process externally and internally, and that'll take care of our projected programs for community development next year. And then we'll also begin the update of our five-year consolidated plan, which is basically a roadmap for FY2021 through 2025, and that really outlines our goals and objectives. We'll look for this body to give some insight and input on that. Any programmatic changes that you would like to see, or any change in programs, directions, or policy, or practices that you'd like to see, we'd look for your input on that. Be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Mr. R, Public Works.
Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, for the opportunity to talk about a few of the Public Works Division's goals for the upcoming year. Just on a personal note, I'm very thankful for the more than 100 of my coworkers that show up every day with a service attitude, a service attitude. They're just giving exemplary performance every day in and day out, and I'm very grateful for that. The Public Works Division is made up of four groups, the first of which being the Engineering Division, which is headed up by Michelle Emerson. She's our Assistant City Engineer. Some of the upcoming goals for the year is to manage the neighborhood traffic calming program to improve livability of subdivisions. Happy to announce that we've had one that's actually go through that entire program, and we're looking forward to implementing some traffic calming in Savannah Ridge subdivision. We also want to provide design review of multiple capital improvement projects, such as the extensions of Gateway Boulevard, Warrior Drive, and Rutherford Boulevard. Those were all new projects outlined in the 2040 Major Thoroughfare Plan. Also want to provide, continue to provide in-house design for intersection improvements to enhance their functionality. A lot of our hotspot projects that we've done over the last couple of years were designed in-house by Michelle. She had that talent. Whenever she came on board, and we got her the software that she needed, and we've been able to keep that, that work in-house. The next department I'd like to talk a little bit about is the Street Department. Raymond Hillis is their director. Raymond wants to continue to increase the construction crews' capabilities to complete larger-scale projects. It's just been, just exponential growth in the amount of construction work that Raymond's group has been able to do over the last several years. And really, he's got quality people. That's only limited by the equipment. The council's been very gracious in approving the purchases of equipment over the last few years, and we look forward to continuing that as well. Want to complete Phase 3 of the Rutherford Boulevard Street Tree Installation, and also want to participate, participate in locating land for a centralized salt barn and sweeper debris transfer facility. Much like solid waste, we get stuck in the long line sometimes at the landfill, and just really just working on the efficiency of having a centralized location to take the sweeper debris, so we're not having to run out to the landfill every time we fill up. The next division is Construction Division, which Mike Stacy, our Senior Inspector, heads up. Mike is, is working on the construction management for the Turn Lane at Robert Rose Drive and Thompson Lane. It's a project that we've had on the books for some time, and actually started as a hotspot project. They're also providing construction management of some of our larger capital improvement projects that we have planned this year, since it's West Cherry Lane, which will serve the Sazerac Facility, Rucker Lane, and Jones Boulevard. And then they also manage the annual contracts that complete multiple paving, storm drainage, and sidewalk projects throughout the city for the entire year. Lastly, the Transportation Group is headed up by Jim Kerr, is their director. Jim is working on a really exciting project, well, exciting for transportation nerds like us. It's a, it's a final, the final design for the Rutherford Boulevard Adaptive Signal System, and it wants to start construction on it as well. I've said for some time now that building alone will not solve our congestion problems. We have to use the technology that's available to enhance the existing systems that we have. And this, if you will, it's a, it's a smart signal system. It's a signal system that actually learns throughout the day and makes adjustments on the fly, and as opposed to hiring a consultant, going out, doing a traffic study, and then coming. We would certainly, we could look at teaming those up, you know, in a similar location. The other thing, and I kind of just kind of glossed over it, but the other one is a salt barn. You know, a lot of folks, we have to go all the way out to Florence Road during our, during the winter season. Just creates a lot of efficiency. And so, we're just trying to look for a central, but certainly, if we could, something we could team up and pair all those up at the same location would be beneficial.
Chris, where are we at on the middle of Tennessee Boulevard?
That's a great question, Councilman Wade. We are scheduled to start the final paving Tuesday of next week. We'd actually wanted to start it a couple of weeks, or about a week and a half ago, but with the high school graduations, MTSU graduated the week before. It's in pretty good riding shape. We did do some leveling there at the intersection last week, but wanted to get out while the high schools were graduating. And spring fling this week, and I'm sure something else next week. Thank you very much.
Come here, Community Services will be next, Ms. Jackson.
Good evening. The Community Service Division includes Parks and Recreation, golf, strategic partnerships, and art. The Parks and Recreation Department is under the leadership of Director Nate Williams and includes 2,000 acres of parks and greenways, eight comprehensive recreational and cultural facilities, and 23 other park sites. We recently restructured to better align our resources by incorporating the St. Clair Street Senior Center into the Parks and Recreation Department and began oversight of the Civic Plaza. We're currently completing the development of a Parks and Recreation Master Plan to guide the continued improvement and development of the park system as we work to best serve our community. We're planning key improvements at Richard Siegel Park and have formed a partnership with the Tennessee State Soccer Association to bring their headquarters to Murfreesboro. We are scheduled to complete the Southern Greenway connection to Barfield Crescent Park this September, which brings us to more than 16 miles of greenway. And we are opening our first mountain bike trail system at Barfield as well. With a growing park system, we are also committed to the maintenance and sustainability of our existing parks and facilities. We've moved our central maintenance operations to Old Fort Park, and we have a great team of very hard-working park staff. Also, very fortunate to have an amazing staff, volunteers, and partners to best serve our community in the areas of athletics, aquatics, cultural arts, fitness, wellness, historic preservation, outdoor Murfreesboro, and resource management. The Golf Department is under the leadership of Director Trey Williams. There are three public golf courts, golf courses, Old Fort Golf Course, the VA Golf Course, and Bloomfield Links. Old Fort Golf is an 18-hole championship course that is widely recognized as one of the best municipal courts in the state. The VA Golf Course is a nine-hole facility that is an economical walking course and is open to the public. Bloomfield Links is a six-hole short course designed as a teaching facility and home to the Murfreesboro Junior Golf Initiative, Bloomfield Linksters, and PGA Junior League. The professional staff at Old Fort Golf are working to promote the Professional Golf Association's Grow the Game initiatives and upcoming programs and events, and are working to expand opportunities to share the many benefits of golf with our community. Strategic partnerships are also being developed. The city of Murfreesboro has historically funded outside agencies for the library and other state and county governmental agencies, as well as 31 nonprofit charitable and civic organizations. A three-year transition was proposed. The current bucket budget recommendations include continued support of those community agencies. Over the next year, we'll be developing a strategic action plan for future funding with input from the community, from agency applicants, city staff, and Murfreesboro City Council. A grant application process will be developed in which goals and objectives are aligned to funding designations, and we will develop an assessment and reporting process to ensure that measurable goals and objectives are met. And finally, I'm pleased with the energy for the arts in our community. The Murfreesboro Art Committee is working to promote art and artists, and not only our city retina, but to advocate and facilitate quality public art throughout our city. The Community Services Division is working to provide public spaces, programs, and services that improve the quality of life of our community, and I welcome any questions.
I'd like to commend, had an opportunity to talk to some visitors that have been here. I was out at the softball fields working, and I just want to commend Nate and all of the folks at Parks and Rec and the Chamber. They were commenting on how, they've been coming several years, their team has been coming pretty regularly, but they were talking about how friendly everyone was and what a, you know, they really looked forward to coming to Murfreesboro for the state, for the state tournaments and for spring fling. And, you know, to see how people, giving rides to people that have to walk a long ways from parking, and just the nature of people that are out there, they put a good front on for our city and for all the visitors to kind of view us in a very positive light. And since they were spending some money here when they come, just commend you for the effort that you put into that, all the volunteers as well.
Thank you.
Something to be proud of.
Thank you.
I'd just add that of all the restructuring that we've done, probably the biggest changes have been in community services that Ms. Jackson's been able to handle. And I know, for one, the Senior Center, which we struggled with for several years now, is has a tremendous amount of positive energy coming out of it and is running extremely smoothly, and so appreciate that effort. Strategic partnerships are something that will benefit the city, I think, over the long term as we develop that program. And lastly, the arts, I think is, Ms. Jackson has a passion for, but that's another thing that, from our community standpoint, will really benefit the entire city.
Ms. Jackson, I've had some board members on the Senior Citizen Board to ask, was that board, is it going to be disbanded or is it going to continue?
Ms. Baker with our Legal Department has been researching the ordinance itself, and we'll be bringing that proposal to you very soon as a, as an action item for how to address the leadership. We're currently working with the Parks and Recreation Commission as in that capacity, but we'll look to address the structure, the resolutions that are, that are associated with those, by the creation of the commission, will be something we'll be bringing to you very soon. She's been working hard at that, researching the past ones. Yes, ma'am.
So if you can, just drop an email or something to the board members because they are wondering, are they still on the board, or if we're going to have one, just say we're working on it or something, because they've been asking me, and I didn't know if that board is being disbanded or what, I didn't know.
Yes, and I know at least one has been, Mr. Shacklet has been working with the Murfreesboro Art Committee and has welcomed him aboard, and I think we're square, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to just make an observation that Old Fort Golf, looking at our budget, is looking on, and we're budgeting conservatively, is looking at about a $42,000 negative this year, and if you take into account the amount of people that are coming in and out of our community, the impact that we have coming back on that, economic impact more than pays for itself. There's some kind of misnomer out there that the golf course costs us $1 million a year, and that's just not the case, so.
I think it serves the community in a lot of ways. I hope that we can work to bring you the information that also shows the impact of Bloomfield Links, some of the youth programs, and how we're serving our community in a variety of ways. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to Internal Services. Royer.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Appreciate the opportunity. We are a, we are a division comprised of departments that have been around a long time, but have not been working necessarily as a cohesive team. So, this is our first shot at running through our division as a group. We assist our customers who is every other department in the city was getting their job done. In one way or another, everything that happens, somebody from our division touches it at some point, and you'll see how that, that happens as we go through the departments. We acquire, manage, and dispose of the city's assets in one way or another, almost on a daily basis. Probably the hardest fit into that wheel is the Communications Department, although if you think of them as managing information and disseminating it to the public, in government, one of our biggest assets is the information that we hold, that we share with our residents. So, they are engaged in that. This year, probably the biggest thing they've accomplished this year is beginning to cover live events throughout the city, both city and community events, Red Cross events, school events, you name it, actually being able to cover them live and broadcast them across our cable channel live. That's after a number of years of diligent searching for an inexpensive way to accomplish that, and finally finding a way to do that. So, for next year, one of the things they hope to do is increase the number of live events that they will broadcast throughout the city, and they're also going to be working with city departments to develop new programs and to develop training for all our employees. Information technology, while not a whole lot different from, in terms of the backbone of it, from communications, has been working on a number of things too. Probably the biggest things they've accomplished this year have been in the use of GIS to support emergency operations, and you'll hear more about that in the future from our public safety departments. But, they, this year, a big thing they did, they worked with the county and with Rutherford County EMS and our folks to develop a GIS app that assists with the dispatching of vehicles to emergencies. It finds them the best route. In a previous position, I worked on a team that did that, and it is amazing what that does once you harness the technology, how much quicker you can respond to an emergency is just literally amazing. So, in 2020, they want to increase network security, they'll have a large hand in the implementation of the land development software. By the way, kickoff, I don't think Mr. Huddleston mentioned, but kickoff's scheduled for next week, June 30th, and they're going to develop a continuity of operations plan. One of the things that I've been working with IT on in the last few weeks is we need to improve our project management, and that's not about any individual, it's about what system we use and how we manage our IT projects. We'll be working diligently on that over the summer with Chris Lilly, in the hopes that we'll be able to better satisfy our customers with how projects move and how milestones throughout the projects are communicated to them. Human resources, in this year, and I made a mistake on this slide, but in this year, they've led the updating of over 240 job descriptions. That is a major accomplishment for any department in any city. To get every job description up to date is a major accomplishment. And it couldn't have been done without the departments. They all were, they all cooperated in the project. In 2020, we hope to establish the beginnings of an employee performance review program. We hope to make our employee handbook more friendly, and the Safety Department's hoping we can pick it up without a backbelt. We hope to find out why we lose the employees we use and what we can do with our policies, procedures, and methods of operation to keep them from leaving, and we're going to conduct some citywide diversity, inclusion, and equity training. Facility management, this year, their biggest accomplishment probably is getting the, we have a new manager in place, and he's pulled the department together and is investigating many ways to improve our facility management and reduce their costs. One of the things that we've managed to accomplish is we've completed 90% of our scheduled ADA improvements to the city facilities. That's, that's a major thing. As was mentioned earlier, we're starting another study, and that is as required by the federal government. For 2020, a big project will be to construct some security enhancements for the Emergency Operations Center in the Police Department. One of the things we learned during our last emergency, our activation of the center, was that we need some security separation between the actual law enforcement function and all of the rest of us who are not law enforcement, but are down there managing the emergency. So, we've been working with the police chief and his staff to come up with a way to make some modifications that make sense for its security as well as the operations of the EOC. We're going to complete the City Hall security enhancements. I know you've seen a blow-by-blow of that. As a cost control measure, we're going to consolidate a whole bunch of different building maintenance contracts across our facilities into one contract. Today, we opened a bid for HVAC maintenance. We learned that for the same money we spent this year, we'll be able to pick up all the fire stations, we'll be able to pick up all the athletic facilities for HVAC maintenance, and every ice machine, which, that might not sound like a big deal, but this time of year, we are rarely a day without a broken ice machine somewhere, and usually on an athletic facility, not here in City Hall. So, we'll also be bidding generators, and we've been working with ADS, who is our contractor for alarms and fire alarms and the security system that we're installing, to consolidate all our facilities on one contract in the hopes that by eliminating those contracts, we'll cut some overhead expense. As you can tell, this is not my long suit. Purchasing and fleet management, I can tell you about that without using a PowerPoint. Fleet management has managed to keep 97% of our rolling stock rolling this year. That's 875 pieces of equipment that 97% of the time is available to the department that needs to operate. We're very proud of that. We doubt there's very many car dealers that could match that, and they don't service the broad range of equipment that we service. Everything from a small compact car to one of Raymond's bulldozers, you name it, we service it, and they've managed to do that. Next year, they want to do the same. They want to try to have 95% availability, and we're going to look into next year a better way to acquire, finance, manage, and dispose of rolling stock, particularly small pieces of equipment. Not bulldozers, but cars. Think cars, SUVs, light trucks. So, that'll be our major goals in fleet management. And in purchasing, what we've managed to accomplish this year is we found a piece of contract management software that is to all of the users of contracts liking. That means legal, finance, purchasing, and some of our customers were asked to, and we all... As you can tell, this is not my long suit. Purchasing and fleet management, I can tell you about that without using a PowerPoint. Fleet management has managed to keep 97% of our rolling stock rolling this year. That's 875 pieces of equipment that 97% of the time is available to the department that needs to operate. We're very proud of that. We doubt there's very many car dealers that could match that, and they don't service the broad range of equipment that we service. Everything from a small compact car to one of Raymond's bulldozers, you name it, we service it, and they've managed to do that. Next year, they want to do the same. They want to try to have 95% availability, and we're going to look into next year a better way to acquire, finance, manage, and dispose of rolling stock, particularly small pieces of equipment. Not bulldozers, but cars. Think cars, SUVs, light trucks. So, that, that'll be our major goals in fleet management, and in purchasing, what we've managed to accomplish this year is we found a piece of contract management software that is to all of the users of contracts liking, that means legal, finance, purchasing, and some of our customers were asked to, and we all believe we can make it work. That will make our contracts readily available to anybody inside the city or outside the city that wants to look at them. That's a big deal too, because a lot of our contract work is revising what we did before, and the more we can make those documents available to staff, the easier it's going to be to procure what we need to procure through contracts. It's also going to make answering citizens' questions about contracts much easier to be able to direct them to one place on the city's website that they can see all of them. So, and that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions?
I have a question. Is there an insurance company that, I know for homes, it, if your washer, dryer, something goes out, you know, you can get this coverage and just pay the deductible and you get the thing free, and I know you were saying about ice machines, I don't know, I know we have refrigerators in places, for government entities. I wonder, is there an insurance that provides that for, like, commercial? It, it sounds like it may be a money saver for us if a refrigerator goes out, a ice maker goes out, you know, just pay the deductible and we get, get it free, or either they will repair it?
That's basically what we're buying with this bid opening today. For instance, we're bid, buying routine, routine inspection, maintenance, and repair. If it's something significantly major that's going to take two or three technicians, three or four days to fix, we're, we're probably going to have to pay for that, but the, the price of that labor will be agreed to in the new contract. But basically, what we're buying is routine repair and maintenance. That's what we're buying by consolidating these contracts. So, I don't know that there's a thing like a home warranty, to be honest with you, but I think this, for a commercial purpose, this, this is about as close as you'll get.
Good job.
Thanks.
If I could add a couple of things, as we've looked at fleet management, we've been talking with, or I've been talking with a, a large international company that manages fleets, just to get some ideas and, and their proposal, and Paul will take that over as he's mentioned. But one of the things that they did do in their proposal is to take a analysis on our maintenance and our maintenance facility and get data from that. They're the company that works on a lot of data, and they, they gathered that, and they were highly complimentary of our fleet services and the job they do and the data they have available and, and the, what they do for our rolling stock. So, kudo to Jacks for, for a facility that they recognized as, as being a quality facility. And, and like I said, they manage vehicles and fleets all over the world. The other thing on, with respect to human resources, one of, we, we worked very hard and we implemented a, a new pay plan this year. One of the, one of the things that we did, and thanks to Pam and all the others who worked on that, but one of the things that we did, and some of the analysis that Pam gave to me, is to take a look at trying to eliminate our turnover, our turnover rates with our pay plan, and I think that was an important aspect, one of the hidden costs, and Pam was able to provide me some, some information in 2018. So, what we want to, what our new pay plan will work away from, but in 2018, we had, what, 68, well, we had 87 employees that left the organization, and the cost of them leaving and recruiting new and bringing them in during that year was over $940,000. So, implementing, implementing a new pay plan that eliminates a lot of that cost is, is something that really comes back to our budget in real time. So, that's, it's important.
And are we still looking into, checking into early retirement, years of service for the firefighters and police? Are we still looking at a study or something, right?
We'll have to go back actuarial, yes, we are, but that'll take some actuarial, actuarial work on, on what that really means to us. Anytime we go back to the pension program, it does take some, some work, and, you know, it does have a significant cost to it.
As long as we're looking into it.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let's move to, before fire and rescue, let's bring schools. Would you, Dr. Gilbert, would you rather go to the end to give you, or would you rather go ahead and?
It doesn't matter. I don't know who was presenting, but I'll read it.
Okay, let's, well, not, so that way I don't catch you off guard. You'll go after administration then. How's that? All right. Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Dr. Gilbert, I was reminded you presented on May 2nd, so you're, you're. Probably would help me. Chief.
Tonight, I wanted to present to you all the, the Fire Department's goals for this coming year. I've kind of laid these out into four different categories. The first category being facilities and equipment. Our goals this year in the facilities and equipment are to complete an outdoor classroom and restroom building at our training facility. Right now, we have no structures or buildings besides the practical use facilities that are at that, the Doug Young Training Facility. This is to get us a little bit of outdoor classroom space and restrooms for the firefighters, police officers, and everyone else that's there training at the Public Safety Training Facility. Station 11 on Blaze Drive to begin construction and complete construction within the budget year of Station 11. You should see in the next few weeks, a contract coming to you for approval of construction of that station. We've identified the, the contractor, and everything should roll on with that once it is approved by council. We should be ready to, to break ground on that station and take delivery and place in the service. The two new heavy rescues that we, that we bid out and purchased last year, those are, have been delayed by about a month or so over where we thought that they would be here, but they, they should be here by the end of June and placed into service in July. Order and take delivery of a new 75-foot ladder truck, Quinn Apparatus, as part of our apparatus replacement schedule. Order a new pumper apparatus as part of our apparatus replacement schedule. That is in the fiscal year 20 CIP. Obtain grant funding and for and purchase automated CPR devices. Obtain grant funding for and purchase ballistic protection equipment for our providers. We are currently doing some training right now that I'm going to mention again here in a minute with, across the county, and obtain grant funding for and purchase rescue boat and trailer. On our training aspects, we're looking to provide in-house advanced EMT classes to increase our number of advanced EMT personnel, and we've got a couple of people going to paramedic school as well. This increases our capabilities with emergency medical service calls. We have trained a, a number of our, our staff over the last few years, I think in the realm of about 40, have become advanced EMTs. We now have it as a requirement for all new, newly hired firefighters and EMTs to become an, an advanced, our firefighters and trainees to become an advanced EMT within three years from the time they become a firefighter. Complete integrated active shooter response training for all personnel. We are currently, just this past month, started training with all the agencies in Rutherford County, all of the fire departments, all of the law enforcement agencies, Rutherford County EMS, on an integrated response to active shooter incidents, because the truth is, when, if we have this type of incident happen in our community, it's going to be multiple agencies responding to that event, and this better coordinates how we respond to those. And that equipment that I mentioned earlier that we're looking to receive on grant goes right along with this training that we're receiving. Continue to seek and provide opportunities for in-house training for all of our disciplines and training, whether it's fire, rescue, emergency medical. Doing in-house training programs gives us a lot, a better capability of training personnel in-house. We're not sending them to classes off where we can send very limited numbers, and we can train higher numbers of people and get classes done in-house much better. Provide advanced cardiac event recognition training to all personnel. This is some advanced, using the monitors that we have purchased in the last couple of years to provide better cardiac care management to our citizens. Continue to provide high-quality in-service training, and also continue to provide high-quality supervisor in-service training for our personnel that we have been providing. And the next classification is performance. Our goal is this year to attain ISO, Public Protection Classification of One, ISO One Classification. ISO has told us that they will be here this fall to evaluate our department again on their, on their cycle of evaluation, and so we should see them probably in October, November, and we'll receive our, our evaluation after that. Our goal is to obtain a Class One Public Protection Classification. We are also looking within this budget year to complete our Fire and Emergency Services Self-Assessment and other remaining modules necessary to achieve accreditation through the Center for Public Safety Excellence. This is a international accreditation that we would achieve. Update and implement comprehensive standard operating guidelines and procedures. We've placed some software in the budget this year to enhance our ability to place those policies, procedures, and guidelines out there for our personnel and have them sign off on them and have them available to our personnel at all times. Continue to provide the highest level and quality of services to the citizens of, and visitors of Murfreesboro. We're definitely looking to increase our levels of performance, as always. And then lastly, partnering for effectiveness. We're looking to, as you all are aware of, we're looking to co-locate and integrate EMS, Fire and Rescue Call Processing, and Dispatch Services with, with Rutherford County. This will improve dramatically dispatch performance overall. There are several committees that have been established and working groups that are going to be going to work this coming month in June, doing the first committee meetings, those are going to pave the way for that integration of dispatch, which will make a humongous difference across the board to all of our personnel or all of the citizens with the timeframes of dispatch. Continue to partner with Rutherford County EMS to provide high-quality patient care. That relationship has gotten much better over the last couple of months, and we are partnering on numerous fronts that we have requested to partner with over the last several years that are, and those things are going very, very well, and we look to continue to partner there. Seeking opportunities and continue to develop strategic partnerships with our stakeholders, especially when it relates to delivering public education and safety mechanisms through our Community Risk Reduction Division. Example of that would be the STEAM program that we have in our city schools that we're going to expand hopefully this fall, and I think Dr. Gilbert will tell you, we are going to expand it to every school in the, in the city this fall and throughout the school year to teach our schoolchildren fire safety through teaching them with the STEAM program. And explore contractual and automatic aid agreements potentially with Rutherford County to improve service levels and response, both in the city and county overall. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
Chief, did I see in one of our buildings a defibrillator?
We've got several buildings around the city that have defibrillators placed in them, and we look to hopefully expand that over time to get more personnel trained in CPR and expand those services.
Yeah, I was impressed. I forgot what building I was in in the city, and I saw it on the wall.
Yes.
That's great.
Chief, how many municipalities in Tennessee have an ISO rating of one?
I think there's approximately 10 or 12 now. That's the harder number to get a hold of, because ISO really doesn't tell you who is ISO One and, and who is not, and so I, I think there's probably around 10 or 12.
What are the benefits to the city and/or the citizens?
As, as far as ISO One classification goes.
This is a two, we're at a two now.
We're at a two now. ISO One, for what we've found, insurance rates have a lot to do with the Insurance Service Office, and so they, what your rating is greatly affects your insurance rates. Moving from a two to a one really will not affect our residents very much at all, if any, as far as their insurance rates go, but for business and commercial entities, it should affect their rates in the 3% to 8% range, is what we see historically moving from a Class Two to a Class One. And of course, that makes a big difference because their, their insurance is typically much higher per capita than a resident is, and so it ma, makes a big difference as far as moving that 3% to 8% range. And with the accreditation, there is very, there are no, the fire departments in the state of Tennessee that are duly ISO One and internationally accredited, and there are only 77 in the entire world that are ISO Class One and accredited. And so, we look forward to pursuing and completing that accreditation and attaining that ISO One rating.
That accreditation's been a long process that you've been.
Yes, sir. We've been, we've been working on it for about a year and a half or two, and moving through that process, we will not finalize it until August of 2020. It's a, it's a very long and intensive process. It includes a strategic plan, developing standards of cover, in other words, what you're going to send to different call types. It's, has a very, very robust risk analysis to it, why we're responding to the calls we're responding to, and what our true risks are in this community and what we need to, to address those risks within our department, as well as a self-assessment, which you do of your department to determine if you're delivering the best services that you can to your citizens. And so, bringing all those things together really makes you a better department, and it, it brings things full-scale to what you're looking to provide for your citizens and makes you, it kind of forces you to address it where you're not sending too much equipment because you're drawing down for the potential of answering other calls, but sending the necessary equipment to be able to address whatever emergency that you're dealing with at that particular time. So, it's a great process. We hope to finish up in, at the accreditation hearings. We'll have to go before the Accreditation Board and, and the hearings in Phoenix in August of 2020, and so this will all, we have to have everything together long before then, probably March or April, but that's when we'll finalize the process and hopefully become accredited.
Command you for taking that process. It's, I know a self-assessment is sometimes hard, because you got to look at things as they are, not just as what you would like them to be, and, but it makes you a better department. I applaud you for taking that and making that effort.
Thank you.
Chief, I've got a, a policy question, and, and in the last week or so, I've, I've seen postings and stuff where we've responded to fires out in the county.
Yes, sir.
And, and I think there's good training opportunity there as well as, as, as helping others, and, and I think that's a good thing. But, but I was curious, is, I, I do know we're putting our employees at risk whenever we go to a situation like that. Is, is, what is the policy? Where do we draw the line? How do we decide which of those we respond to and which ones we don't?
Typically, well, right now, we do not have any automatic aid agreements. That's something that we were wanting to explore the potential of, to see how that would benefit both the city and the county, because it would have to have a benefit for us as well. But right now, those are requests on mutual aid, essentially, so, and typically, if we're requested for mutual aid, it's most of the time one firefighting piece of equipment. The, we had one this past week on East Main Street that was a large apartment building that got very involved, and we sent three pieces of equipment to that, to that structure with, to assist with the county. They had, I think, four or five pieces of equipment on the scene, just because of the size of the building. But it's basically a case-by-case basis. On a mutual aid call, our, they call our dispatch center, they notify our battalion chief, and the battalion chief says, yes, we have the capability of responding to it to be able to keep the city covered as well. We will send someone, and that's typically how that response goes within the county. Anytime that a request is made within the county, and of course, beyond that, if we go out of county, that has to be approved by myself, anywhere within the state, and then if we go out of state on an emergency management assistance compact, that would have to be approved by the city manager prior to us committing to, to respond somewhere, similar to what we've done with South Carolina, Texas, for the flooding responses. But we, we typically address it on a case-by-case basis, but we try to help them anytime we can, and they have, they also help us. They provide tanker service for us. We do not have any water tankers that have large amounts of water, 1,500 to 2,000 gallons. The place we need those, we've got great water coverage all over, but we don't have any fire hydrants on the interstate, and so answering our interstates, we have to have water coverage there, so they provide those tanker trucks to us on the interstate. So, it's a, it's a mutually beneficial relationship.
Good.
All right, Chief, thank you. All right, let's move to police. Chief Bowen.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. As part of the Police Department's FY20 goals, we want to begin the development and implementation of an officer and employee wellness program. It's crucial for us to make sure that our officers are provided with their appropriate resources to help them with the stressors, the stressors that they deal with on a daily basis. One of the goals of this program is to not only bring constant awareness to all staff members about the resources that are available to them, our plan is to develop a program that pairs police recruits or other officers in need with mentors. This can be done in conjunction with training all officers on the importance of managing trauma and stress. Early intervention will be a key component to this program. It's crucial for us to make sure that our officers are provided with their appropriate resources to help them with the stressors, the stressors that they deal with on a daily basis. One of the goals of this program is to not only bring constant awareness to all staff members about the resources that are available to them. Our plan is to develop a program that pairs police recruits or other officers in need with mentors. This can be done in conjunction with training all officers on the importance of managing trauma and stress. Early intervention will be a key component to this program, and this program would not only be available to police officers, but other positions such as dispatchers. One of the key things that we've learned about these type programs is the impact that they have on turnover and the positive impact that they have on turnover rates. One of the other things that we'd like to accomplish hopefully by the end of this year is, in partnership with ATF, is the implementation of technology allowing the comparison of ballistic evidence while investigating violent crimes involving firearms. And that's basically part of our NIBIN system, which is the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network. And that allows us to collect evidence from brass cases, things from firearms, and enter those into a national database and show correlations and be able to link them to other crimes. We've made significant process towards becoming fully operational, and hopefully by the end of this calendar year, we will have that up and running. One of our other goals is to expand the Special Investigations Division. The Special Investigations Division is a part of our CID unit. We are currently allocated 16 detectives in that section, and they either work in the gang unit, the vice unit, or the narcotics section. The addition of two detectives, which are, have been presented in this budget, will allow us to increase the number of officers assigned to the narcotics section from seven to nine. These additions are pretty critical right now because it'll let us increase our efforts on heroin, fentanyl, and opioid investigations, including overdoses. We're trying to link the overdoses to the supplier and trying to pursue other criminal charges for the people, either whether it be drug charges or, in some cases, when those fatalities involve second-degree murder charges. Just in April, I had our analysts run the numbers on some of these, and we had logged, as of April, 65 overdoses year-to-date. Four of those were fatalities. So, it's a, it's a tremendous problem for us, and it's something that we are definitely dedicating resources and trying to combat. One of the things that we're also working with in, at least our next goal, enrollment in the ICP One Mind Campaign. As we teach our officers de-escalation training, we're also trying to help with mental health crisis situations. So, in researching the ICP campaign, we want to be a part of that. We want to sign up for that during the next fiscal year. And basically, what it does is it sets some, some guidelines for participating agencies, and that is, you know, having a partnership with a mental health organization in your city, developing model policies in responding to mental health crisis emergencies, training 100% of our officers and non-sworn staff in mental health first aid, and also committing 20% of our agency's officers to full CIT, CIT-type training. I think as an agency, we're committed to the principles outlined in that program, and we are continuously working to reach full compliance. One of our long-term projects is the full implementation of a 700 radio system, and it's finally looking like that the project will be nearing completion, hopefully early in FY20. We're making progress. The console system has been installed and tested, and staff is presently transitioning pay of public safety users to the new system. The plan is for the 911 communication section to begin transitioning June 12th, and then police and fire rescue portable units and stuff will be transitioned for the remainder of the months. I think right now, Bill tells me that Parks and Recreation is currently using the new system for spring fling. So, and that's been a lot of work, and I'd just like to thank Bill for all his hard work on that and finally seeing this project to an end. One of the goals set by our communications center, they are really working hard and really addressing the additional responsibilities put on them. And one of the things that they would like to see is us pursue a call center partnership with the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. And basically, what that would do is let us take any 911 calls regarding missing or sexually exploited children. It really provides training so that we're following best practices whenever we're encountering those types of situations. Also, we would like to obtain certification for our dispatch training program through AppCo, and that is, once again, something where we're trying to follow best practices in communications and training. Lastly, the certified personnel request for the proposed budget will increase the number of certified officers from 267 to 281, 281, excuse me, which will result in a ratio of about 1.87 officers per 1,000, based on FY20 population projections. The addition of these positions will last to move closer to, in trying to reach a goal of two officers per 1,000 over the next few fiscal years. The 12 police positions will be sent to the Unicorn Division to perform patrol functions, and the detective positions, of course, will be allocated to the Special Investigations Division. You'll also find the addition of six communications specialists and three emergency coordinators, which will allow us the opportunity to meet the growing needs of our communications center. Recruitment and retention will be an area of focus and in order to ensure that we are hiring a diverse workforce of qualified candidates. And at this time, I can answer any questions you may have.
I have a question, Chief. Are you aware, as we're beginning, we are coming up on the fireworks season, are you aware of any type of fireworks that is ineligible to use in our community where the police take up a particular type of fireworks from people?
Yes, ma'am. They are defined in the ordinance, and there are certain launchable type, mortar-type rounds that are not, you're not allowed to have them in the city limits. They can't be sold in the city limits. But yes, there are, there are certain requirements for fireworks use.
Okay, because I, I'll share this email from a citizen with you. And so, I guess, counsel, when we are looking at approving fireworks, this mortar-type fireworks are sold inside the city limits in these fireworks, they say. Now, this is just an email, I don't know. And then, if so, if that's the case, then as a counsel, we need to, if we approve the fireworks, we need to make sure the ineligible ones are not sold, because, you know, it doesn't make sense to go to a fireworks place and be able to buy the fireworks and get home and can't use them.
Yes, ma'am. And typically, what happens when, when the fireworks are legal to sell, and you start seeing the tents pop up around town, typically, officers patrol those areas, and they check and make sure that they're in compliance with the ordinance. And we've run in situations where we've had to cite people, but we try to stay on top of that during, during the times that they're being sold.
And I'll help you, let you help me with this response.
Okay.
Because I'm not aware of what we can and cannot pop here.
I try to buy three-inch mortars every year, but you can't find them.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think the fireworks distributors do a pretty good job.
Yeah, they're, they're doing a...
You can't always go by what you email, so I was just going to...
Mortars and bottle rockets are the main two.
Okay.
Are prohibited.
That's what me and my brother use fireworks wars.
Okay. I'll tell them to go to your house and get them then.
We just go South Pittsburgh.
As we talk about fireworks wars and, let's move to the legal department.
Thanks, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Around the first of the year, I had the opportunity to meet with each of you individually to discuss my vision for the legal department and the risk management departments going forward, and to, to learn what, how we could better serve and support council and the departments in advancing initiatives and, and policy priorities. The budget that's presented tonight, that's before you tonight, reflects many of the things that we discussed. Probably the most significant of these changes involves the way we will be handling risk management going forward. I will note that the first principle of risk management going forward is that the city attorney's bicycle privileges have been indefinitely suspended.
Hey, well, I, I just got noticed that I think Mayor Brawley in Nashville is working on suspending the same type of scooter privileges in Nashville as well.
But in all, in all seriousness, we're, we've, we've spent the first probably four months of this year looking at restructuring risk management functions, both internally and externally. Internally, we've already implemented some of those, and that involves taking the risk management department and the operations of the risk management department and dividing them between human resources and the legal department. So, workers' comp administration and workplace safety have moved to human resources, and that went into effect in February. And, and that has involved the transfer of two personnel out of risk management to human resources, and responsibility for liability, general liability, auto, property damage claims has been brought into the legal department. And that has resulted in an attorney, a risk manager, coming from the risk management department to the legal department. So, in effect, what is, what we've done is that the risk management department no longer really exists. We have a risk management fund, but the fund funds operations in other departments. And we think that will bring efficiencies, and I think it plays to the strengths of staff, existing staff in the legal department and in the human resources department. We've also looked at and reexamined which services we should continue to provide in-house through the legal department and human resources, and which ones we might be able to find some cost savings and efficiencies by contracting those services out. And on the consent agenda tonight, there are two of those proposals. One with respect to workers' compensation, which would involve going from a self-insured model to a fully insured model with a, with a significant self-aggregate self-insured retention. Similarly, it involves, with respect to general liability, auto liability claims, it is going from a self-insured model to a fully insured model with a sizable aggregate self-insured retention. I think the advantages of those are twofold, is that, one, that model caps our exposure, I say threefold. One, neither of those models involves an increase in expenditure by the city, and in some instances, it involves a decrease over what was budgeted last year. Two, both of those models cap the city's risk exposure for that type of claim. And the third is that it frees up resources, human resources, in the term, in terms of attorneys and administrative support staff to work on other important matters of the city, providing more of a general council function for the, for the city departments and for city council to advance city council priorities, the priorities of the city manager and departmental priorities. The, the last change that is reflected in this budget is the addition of an additional assistant city attorney. And this is someone who I foresee assisting in responsibilities relating to land use, zoning, real estate, and condemnation litigation. We have a lot of that work. David, David Ives does an excellent job with that work, but there is a lot, more than enough work to go around. And so, I think that is where our greatest need is right now. And going for fiscal year 2020, the goal is to continue to plan for the future, to engage with the departments, help figure out how we can support those priorities, continue to engage with council, to provide timely legal advice, support your priorities, and to work closely with city administration in supporting priorities, including economic development. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
So, we're having a, an additional attorney, or we're not hiring?
We, you're, we're having, there is a proposed assistant, one additional assistant city attorney. So, it will, what, prior, prior to this, this budget year, there were, or in fiscal year 2019, there were seven employees in the legal department, four attorneys, and three legal assistants. And the risk management department had three employees, the risk manager slash attorney, and then the safety director and a claims specialist. We are now going to have nine, nine employees in the legal department. There'll be six attorneys, which includes the transfer of the risk manager to the legal department, plus a new, new position, and then three legal assistants. The claims specialist position and the safety director are now in the, in human resources.
Okay. I know we talked about a litigator or something, the need for that in, in your department. Is that what the new attorneys?
Well, they would be involved in litigation, they would not be involved in litigation in terms of litigation defense, say tort defense. That is something that would be covered under the general liability policy. But in terms of moving lawsuits forward, such as involving condemnation or other land use matters, appeals from city boards and commissions, having another litigator to help to handle that type of, those type of court proceedings, that, that, that is new assistant city attorney should be able to handle those cases. That's my expectation.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So, is this the position that's currently posted?
This is, this is the position that is posted. It is a position that I received permission from Mr. Tyndall to post in advance of budget approval, so we could get that position, hire, hire someone into that position if council approves the position, and do that as soon as, after July 1st as we can. Obviously, if you do not approve the, the budget with that position, we wouldn't hire anyone into that position.
And if in turn, this were a internal promotion, that would create an opening within its well, so there would be another posting that would come up.
Well, there, there is, there's no, there's no one that could be internally promoted into this. With the, well, with the exception of the risk manager, there's no, who's already has that role, there's no one that could be promoted into that assistant city attorney position. It, there, there just isn't.
They'd have to go to law school really fast.
Yeah.
Pass the bar quickly.
Pass the bar quick, yeah.
So, Mr. Tucker, part of the, I guess, we're talking about a lot of moving pieces, both from a risk management standpoint and with the acquisition of an attorney for the, for the city school.
Yes.
That's, those employee expenses are the majority of the expenses in the change in the budget for the difference year over year.
That is correct, yes. And, and one of the, the, a lot, what you'll see is a lot of the, the operational expenses that were in risk management last year have moved over to the legal department. Basically, what we, the, the risk manager's full salary and benefits moved over to the legal department, and we more or less split the operational expenses of the risk management department, one-third to legal, two-thirds to human resources. And that's, that's reflected in the operational expenses for the legal department.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, any questions? Mr. Tucker? All right, we'll move to finance.
I'll just stay right here. Our department is divided basically into accounts payable, tax, finance, and now we have payroll production that's moved from HR to my department this year. And like some other departments, we have a lot of external... And like some other departments, we have a lot of external and internal customers, which we try to assist based on their needs. One of our goals for next year, after last year upgrading our financial software to the cloud, so it's cloud-based, then we upgraded the software itself. This fall, we will begin testing again because next year, there'll be another upgrade. Ms. Tucker, when she was the project manager on that, on that implementation, she said that we probably could plan on about every eighteen months going through this process to keep us current with what is offered and to have us in the, where we need to be to offer good software to our users, and a part of that will be us training. Last year, we used some YouTube videos to try to have videos available for people to be able to train, and I expect us to delve into that a little bit more. We got a lot of good feedback from those, they could watch that video when they had time, and it was useful at their desk. Additionally, there's a software package that we have and have used a little bit, but we want to actually get more into it, make it more robust. It's Project Ledger software. We believe that can help us with grant tracking and our CIP spending on our various projects. We've already watched a demo on that. We've reached out to a peer city to get some guidance on what pitfalls to avoid, and we'll be gearing up for that in this next fiscal year. Additionally, our other big goal is to move to purchase cards, P-cards. This is something some of the departments have really been wanting. We're going to be partnering with Mr. Boyer on that. We have a new assistant finance director, Jennifer Vickery, who came from the state of Tennessee. She's got experience using P-cards. She knows some good policies and processes we can put in place and some things we should not put in place, and so we're gonna benefit from her experience with that. Part of the P-card process is we have to make sure it's carefully set up because we have to look at strong internal controls, and we, that will include card issuance, how and where the card can be used, spending limits. It's one of those, it's one of those necessary evils in this day and age, I think, but it also can put people in a position of getting themselves in trouble. So we want to do our best to set this up to where it's a win-win for the departments, and it works well for everyone. Other than that, we're just gonna work harder at monitoring internal controls and overseeing our grant spending and our reporting. Ms. Rosa has been working on grants with the departments, and she's coming up with some processes on that, and I think that's been helpful, and she's been good about answering questions for those as they get into managing those grants. We're working with them to try to have a good process and have a good reporting system on that. And that's all I have. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, we'll move to administration.
All right, administration's made up of a council, administrative support, and our agenda development. There's also city manager's office with myself, assistant city manager, two executive directors that aren't specifically assigned to departments. We also have our budget director, director of project management, and our public information section, so we've brought our communication with the media and the community within the city manager's office during the last year. In the coming year, what we'd like to, what I'd like to do is to go back to the effort that we initiated and still need to complete in formulating our core value statement. It will be helpful in our development of our organizational culture. I'd also like to spend time overseeing what is very important implementation of computers for our land management software system, so I want to actively be involved in that. We plan on finalizing the sale and initiating development on the First Methodist Church property, and along with that, furthering our economic development capacity in-house to work with the chamber as they do their economic development activities. We are at a point now where we really need to have that capacity in-house and focused on what we as a city need to do for our economic development. As I said, we'll work with the chamber, we'll also work with the IDB to enhance the knowledge and use of tax incremental financing districts and pilot programs and other incentives that we could bring to council to decide on how we bring in economic development in our economic development toolbox. And we have a consultant that we have contracted with to help us with that in the coming year. I think it's important also, it was mentioned earlier with HR, to create a viable employee handbook and to rewrite some policies and procedures next week. Next week, we have a new policy and procedure brought up. Like to make those, the handbook much more user-friendly, much more meaningful to the employees, and divide out some of the administrative stuff that is important to us, but not, doesn't really impact employees on a daily basis, so we have an employee handbook that really is workable for the employees themselves. Some other initiatives, enhance our communications with council. I also like to work with council to set a date on our long-discussed and yet-to-come-about council retreat for setting goals and objectives for next year. Like to complete our renovation and security improvements at City Hall, and continue with our strong project management with Mr. McKnight's talents on helping us as we construct our buildings and do some remodeling and making sure that those are the most cost-effective, or using the most cost-effective means as possible. Any questions? Certainly entertain any questions, both about administration or any other aspects of the budget, while we have our department directors here, and anyone else. If we do have about twenty minutes, well, no, about ten minutes, I guess. They need ten minutes to turn the facility for our broadcasting, but if there's any other questions of council, we'd be happy to entertain those.
Craig, the operating cost side on the mayor and council piece, is that the stipend that we've talked about for twenty? There's some additional showing...
I'm looking at Erin because she knows more, but she didn't hear your question.
The 2019 personnel cost under mayor and council versus 2020, obviously, there's an increase there. What specifically makes that up?
There's an increase to the car allowance and an added cellphone allowance for council this year.
I think the car allowance has been the same for, what, ten years?
More than that.
More than ten years, and cellphone as well, so I think adjustments in some of the costs that you bear on a daily basis is what we're looking at.
I knew we talked about that, I just wanted...
What about cellphone, you said? Cellphone, you...
Yeah, cellphone allowance and car...
I just didn't hear you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Marcus asked for five minutes, so we're gonna give him twenty minutes. We'll stand adjourned and get ready for our regular meeting.